Thank you.
City Council regular meeting for the city of Dana Point for November 16, 2021. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please let the record show that all council members are present.
That is fantastic. Mr. City Attorney, I understand there's a need for closed session and need to add an item.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor. Before we go into the closed session agenda, I'd like to propose that we add an item. It would be a conference with labor negotiator pursuant to government code section 54957.6. It would relate to the agency's designated representative, who is a city manager, and the unrepresented and represented employees of the city in all positions. The need to add this item arose because of developments and negotiations today that we need to address before our next scheduled meeting.
Thank you very much. I will move that we add that closed session item to our closed session agenda. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that item is added. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on our closed session agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, then we are recessed.
Mr. Mayor, if I could finish just...
Oh, yeah, your other item too. Go ahead, sorry.
The other items on the closed session agenda are a conference with legal counsel as a result of anticipated litigation due to the significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.92, and we have two cases to discuss.
Madam Clerk, are there any public comments on those?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Now we are recessed to closed session.
Good evening, everybody. Sorry for the minor delay. Welcome to the Dana Point City Council meeting for November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. We're now reconvened from closed session. And please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance led tonight by Councilmember Valar. All right. Thank you, everyone. We're going to start tonight with a presentation. We are recognizing our volunteers of the quarter. Two of our volunteers in police services, Mr. Tom Lewis and Al Bishop. If you two would please join me up front. Welcome, gentlemen. Turn around. The camera's up there. They all want to look at you guys. I normally try not to read these, but these two gentlemen's backgrounds are so similar. If I don't have this on paper, I'm going to screw it up. With your masks on, you guys even look alike. Tom has been, he's lived in Dana Point for twenty years. Is that right? Close to twenty years. You've been a volunteer in police services for eighteen years and have logged two thousand nine hundred and forty-four hours of service. Al over there has, you can see why I have this written down, has lived in Dana Point for about eighteen years and been a VEP for sixteen years, has logged five thousand one hundred and six hours of volunteer service so far. Absolutely amazing. Al's been married to his wife, Joanne, for fifty-nine years. Joanne's here. Hi, Joanne. Tom has been married to his wife, Linda, for fifty-seven years. Do I have that right? Is Linda here? Hi, Linda. You're both were career educators, correct? Tom, where were you? Whittier, right. A long career teaching in the Whittier School District. Teacher, principal, superintendent, all that stuff. And Al, you were a teacher in Brea and then a lot of time as a driver's ed instructor. And for many, many, many years, these two gentlemen have been our volunteers in police services. For those of you who don't know what the volunteers in police services do, they do courtesy patrols in our neighborhoods. They help at all of our events. They help out front in the front office at police services. And they really are an important part of the safety of our town. And more importantly, you guys are exemplary of what our citizens can do to make this a better community. So tonight, let me read the citation if you don't mind. "We want to recognize you both, Tom Lewis and Al Bishop. Whereas the Dana Point Volunteers and Police Services are an integral to the success of the city, integral to the success of Dana Point Police Services and are ambassadors to the community." We've talked about already what you guys have done and the number of hours you put in, which is absolutely stunning. Now and therefore, on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Dana Point, I, Jamie M. Federico, Mayor, hereby express my gratitude to Tom Lewis and Al Bishop for your dedication to the Dana Point Volunteers and Police Services program and express heartfelt appreciation for your invaluable contributions to the betterment of our community. Thank you for your decades of dedicated service to the community dated the sixteenth day of November, two thousand and twenty-one. Signed by me, Mayor Jamie Federico.
You've had a chance to meet my wife and I'd like to introduce you to my sons, sons, plural, John and Brett. Thank you both for being here. And I'd just like to say that I'm on a time volunteering, but the volunteering, I've certainly received more than I've given through all of the friends and so forth that I've had a chance to work with. I would name all of them, but there's so many of them here I see all around. And Al and I have really been able to, over the years, forge a friendship. And believe it or not, I wasn't a part of this, but Al and my wife and his wife, they were all in the same high school, the same, not at the same time, but pretty close, same time. And I'd like to also thank you and the City Council for your support of the program because it really makes a difference, I think, just by being out there and people seeing us. And also makes a difference for us, too, to talk to the people, to see what the residents are like here in Dana Point. And you're all great. Like to introduce my wife, Joanne. She told me not to get emotional, but and my daughter, Jennifer, in the back. And I want to thank the City Council for your support. Without you guys, we wouldn't be doing this and wouldn't have the pleasure of meeting some fine people back there. And the police chief, she's great. I tell you how nice this city is and how nice these people are. We get a lot of people that start in Dana Point and they go because they have to, because of their changing in rank and so on. They have other duties they have to perform. And they all come back. It's amazing because we have such fine people. Jill back there, Bernie, Monica, Sergeant Felter and Krista, our police chief. All wonderful people, all, and tremendous. And so I, every morning when I wake up, I thank God I live in Dana Point. We don't have a lot of the problems other people seem to quit themselves with. And it's so nice. And this is the nicest place in the world to live. If you have, if you don't know that by now, you need to really think and take a good look at things because this is a wonderful place, wonderful. And there just isn't anything nicer. And I've been around the world and I've seen other places and this, we're so fortunate to live in the United States and to have the thin blue line. And I know they're the jelly green giants, as I call them. So anyway, thank you very much for everything.
Tom, would you like to have your family come? How do you guys want to do it? Why don't you have your guests come up? Or you guys all want to come up together? And Al, don't go anywhere. One more. Police Service is going to come up and take home a few minutes.
One more, Tom.
Thank you again to Tom and Al for everything they do for our community. Madam Clerk, getting on to business. Do you have any ordinance titles to read?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you tonight is a second reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Dana Point, California, amending Title One and Title Five of the Dana Point Municipal Code pertaining to the enforcement of violations of the municipal code by way of administrative citation.
Fantastic. Thank you. Brings us to our consent calendar tonight. As always, all matters listed under the consent calendar are routine and will be enacted with one roll call vote. There'll only be a separate discussion if any of these items are pulled by members of the council, the public or the staff for separate action. Are there any items to be removed by the public?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Kilbride, the staff?
No, sir.
Council? All right. I will move the items. Second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right. That passes. Thank you. Checking to make sure I didn't miss any there. All right. Public comments. We do not have any general public comment. Is that right? I'm going to read, we do have some public comments for later and I think everyone's probably listening. So I'm going to go through some rules on public comment here. Nonetheless, when you comment tonight, there's a three-minute time limit per person with an overall limit of thirty minutes for public comments. At the mayor's discretion, the balance of public comments can be heard at the end of new business. All comments are to be directed at the City Council, shall not consist of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain a professional courteous decorum during their comments. And state law prohibits the City Council from taking any action on an item that is not specifically posted on the agenda. All right. That brings us to public hearings. Item number twelve, redistricting process required by state law. It is noticed for six thirty PM. So we will move on. We're going to hold that until six thirty as we have to do that at a time certain. So that we will take that out of order and we're going to go to item number thirteen, which is Historic Preservation Agreement, the Mills Act for property located at two four four two two Santa Clara Avenue. The recommended action is that the council authorize the mayor to sign an historic property preservation agreement, which allows the historic structure's property owners at that said address to participate in the Mills Act program. Do we have a staff report? Mr. Champa?
John Champ, I'm the case planner for the Lambert residence, which is a request for historic property to be entered into a Mills Act. The property is located at two four four two two Santa Clara. Property was originally constructed in nineteen twenty-nine. It's located within the Lantern Village of the city. And the Dana Point specific plan is within the residential medium density zoning designation. Is a pretty impressive bluff lot overlooking the city and the harbor. And as you can see here, it is surrounded by adjacent development. However, there is a vacant lot adjacent to the property, which is under the same ownership. Just to give you a little background about the property, it was evaluated by the city's historic consultant at the time, back in nineteen ninety-seven, and was added to the city's historic inventory list. The property is since sold and the recent owners have requested the property be added to the city's historic registry, which was completed on October twentieth this year. The property owner is now requesting that the property be added to the Mills Act and is why we are here in front of the City Council this evening. Just to give you a little background, the building is associated with the city's earliest period of development from nineteen twenties and thirties. As you can see here, there's very little development in contrast to the aerial photo that I had earlier up. It's a Spanish colonial architectural, or Spanish colonial revival architecture. And as you can see here, the key character defining features of the building are the large arched entry with the decorative stucco tiling around the side. It has deep inset windows and doors, as well as the stucco siding and tiled roof. As you can see, the configuration here, which is as it is today, is a main building and then a detached three-car garage that's located towards the street, perpendicular to the street. So as you can see here, it's in its original configuration. Staff did conduct a site visit of the property to identify if there were any significant modifications over the years that would be recommended to be included in term, into the restoration improvements as part of the Mills Act program. There were some minor modifications that occurred over the years and so those have been included into the restoration improvements as part of the Mills Act agreement. restoration improvements as part of the Mills Act agreement, which include the replacement of a kitchen window, which was a louver window to a traditional window design of that period, as well as painting, I'm sorry, as well as painting the eaves, traditional dark brown color. And the stucco detailing around the arched entry has been modified over the years. So either if they're able to determine what the original color was, playing it to that, or a traditional color that would be acceptable. And then just continue to paint and repair the main key features of the property, which include the eaves, windows, and doors. So with that, staff is recommending that the city staff and the planning commissioner are recommending that the city council enter them into a Mills Act agreement with the property. And this would be resulting in the 35th property participating in the Mills Act program with the city. So that concludes staff's presentation. Staff and the property owner are available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Before we open the public hearing and take comments, does the council have any questions for the staff? Mayor Protem Miller, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor. Under the Mills Act, will the owners be required to open the home to the public at all during the year?
No.
Okay, so they don't, because I believe they get federal funding for this, for this restoration, do they not?
So the it's a tax break on their property taxes. The only requirement is that they allow the city inspection of the property every five years.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? Okay, then we will open the public hearing. Do you have one public comment? Madam Clerk, are there any new ones that you've had turned in?
No, Mr. Mayor.
No, then our first and only public speaker will be Barbara Johannes from the City of Dana Point.
Mayor and councilman and staff. I am president of the Dana Point Historical Society and I'm here on behalf of the Board of Directors. First, I want to comment and compliment Brenda Wasneski and John Champa on the report that you did and recommended to the planning commission. I thought it was wonderful. And covered all the important requirements that this house meets, and it more than meets them. For example, a property has to be 50 years old, but this one's 90. What, one year old, rear as well now. And I had the privilege of visiting the house on two different occasions for private events of the former owners. And it is impressive. It's very impressive to sit in that living room and look out this big arch window at the Pacific Ocean and the harbor below. It's outstanding. And of course, the house is planned to take advantage of that view. I'm really thankful. Not only do I want to wish all of you a happy Thanksgiving, but this is really a gift. We, to have this on the city's historic resource register and to have it recommended by the planning commission for the Mills Act, because there have been times, for example, with the Doheny House, when it was a lot more complicated before the situation was resolved. So I want to thank everybody for that. And just repeat what the preservation chair wrote when he said that the historical society supports Edward and Kathleen Lambert's eligibility, their homes eligibility for the Mills Act program in exchange for their commitment to keep their property in good repair, thus preserving this designated historical structure for the future. Thank you and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. We have no more public comments. I will close the public hearing. And before I move the item, I'd just like to thank the Lamberts for agreeing to keep that house historical. So with that said, I will move the item and the recommended action.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion or? Comments? No? Madam Clerk? Yeah?
I just, I wanted to echo the public comment in that, boy, we're, we're pretty lucky. My wife and I walk Santa Clara all the time, and I'll tell you what, I was really surprised to hear or find out that it wasn't already on the register, on the Mills Act. And this, actually, I think that this is a gift. This is pretty darn neat. And walking around through, at least the Lantern Village, walking by woodroofs or that sort of style of home is, is what builds a lot of character and represents a lot of the character in the Lantern Village. So I'm certainly in favor of this.
Madam Clerk, you want to take the vote for us?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Frost.
Yes.
Councilmember Vexoric.
Aye.
Councilmember Valar.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Miller.
Aye.
Mayor Federico.
Aye.
That passes five to zero. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you. And thanks again to staff and to the Lamberts. That thing, that, that home is now guaranteed to stay a historic home in the, in the nature it's in now. So that's fantastic. Thank you very much. Mr. City Attorney, we have five minutes. Should we?
My suggestion is that you take up item 15. It will probably take longer than the five minutes we have, but you can.
We can start late, just not early. Is that right?
That's correct.
Item 14 is probably going to get us.
We have quite a number of speakers on item.
Oh, the speakers. Thank you very much. Yeah, all right. Item number 15, we will take then. That is the American Coasts and Ocean Protection Act. Recommended, recommended action that the city council authorize the mayor to send a letter in support of the recommend of the American Coasts and Oceans Protection Act. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Before you is a recommendation, as you said, to send a letter of support for some legislation submitted by Congressman Mike Levin, that he introduced, House Resolution 3053, American Coasts and Oceans Protections Act, designed to prohibit any new leasing for the exploration, development, or production of oil or natural gas in the Southern California planning area of the Outer Continental Shelf, which includes areas adjacent to our coast. The intent here is to help protect in the future Dana Point's coastal environment, economy, and way of life from the harmful effects of offshore oil and gas development. As you know, we recently had a oil spill off of Huntington that has, that continues to have an impact. Our fisheries are still closed. I believe it's consistent with the council's strategic plan. Several of the strategic plan goals, one in particular that I neglected to write into the staff report, but is probably the most on point. Strategic Plan Goal Four, number four, which is to preserve and enhance our environmental health and sustainability, in particular, preserving and protecting our ocean waters and beaches. With that, we are available to answer questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any public comments, Madam Clerk?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, then any questions for the staff? Open to hear a motion? Okay, question. Mayor Protem Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I was looking at this, and I seem to remember a couple of years ago, the House passed a bill that already handles this. It's called the Coast, the Coastal Marine Economies Protection Act. And it already prohibits future leases for oil and gas drilling off the Atlantic Pacific coasts. Why, why are we taking up a bill that, that does nothing more than, than a bill that already exists today? I mean, this is one of those things that it's, it sounds good on its surface. I don't know why, why we have a congressman that's, that's pushing this when it already exists. It's redundant legislation. And so, you know, we, we have addressed this on different levels before in this chamber before, not always at the federal level, but sometimes at the state and local level. And I, I'm just not sure why I would support redundant legislation because it doesn't, I'm not sure why, why it's even being written, considered already exists. So I don't think I'm going to support this, but thanks.
All right. I guess that was a rhetorical question, not so much a question for staff. Okay? More of a comment. A motion from anyone?
I'll make a motion that, to authorize the mayor to write a letter in support of this.
Okay. Second?
Second.
A second from Mr. Frost. We have a motion and a second. Any comment? Mr. Frost, looks like you want to speak?
No.
Mr. Vexoric, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have some questions, but I was waiting to see if there was a motion in a second before we discussed it. So I, I think in, I'm aware of the, the act that Mayor Protem was referring to, and I had a similar thought, but let me, let me try to ask a few other questions. Do you, staff, I guess I'll ask this. You, you put this on, correct? So I'll ask, are you aware of that act that the Mayor Protem's talking about?
That act has not been brought to my attention, no.
Okay. Well, I guess that would, that gave my next question, because I was going to ask, how does it differ? And, and why, why would we be doing this? So I guess my question is, what, you know, I, I read the staff report. It was pretty short. All it really gave us was the, the language of the, of the proposed amendment to the bill. So, you know, what? Why, why is this being brought to us without, you know, more research being done so that we can answer some of these questions?
Certainly be willing to do more research. Like I said, I wasn't, I was not aware of the act that, or the law that council or Mayor Protem Miller mentioned. I did dig in quite extensively to the Outer Continental Shelf Lands Act itself. That, to my knowledge, up until now, regulates what can and can't be done off, off land, if you will, around the United States coast. Also looked at, you know, the oil reserve studies. So I can tell you that the current oil platforms that are out there have about nine years left of the oil to tap into, but there's roughly something close to $5 billion or $5 billion gallons of untapped potential oil out there. So there's certainly an inventory out there that might incent future exploration. I don't know what the act is, though, that Mayor Protem Miller's mentioning. More than willing to go look for it.
I'll ask you about this specific act then, or this proposal that we're being asked to sign on to. Do you know if, how many cosponsors there are for this?
I believe there were seven cosponsors or eight.
Okay, are they, are they all local? Do you know who they are?
They're up and down our coast, for the most part.
Is it garnering any other support in the House of Representatives that you're aware of?
They've had one committee meeting. I forget the name of the committee. I think it was mentioned. And I'm not sure how quickly it would move forward. But I know there's been a lot of energy recently because of the oil spill. So I don't know where it's going to go.
Okay. Are there any other cities that you're aware of that are taking up this issue tonight?
I know San Diego County is considering it, I think, this week, if they haven't already passed it. City of San Clemente, I believe the city of Laguna Beach, and I didn't look any farther than that.
Okay, they're all taking this up, or you, they've already expressed their support?
Yes, I believe San Diego County was the most recent, a couple of weeks ago with San Clemente.
Okay, well, I, I guess those are my questions. I'm just a, I'm a little concerned at the, the fact that this does seem to be redundant. This may already cover something that's already been done. We also, as a council, don't usually, not that we never do, it's not, you know, it's not unprecedented that the city might take a stand on a bill that comes before us. But we do do it fairly rarely and, and pretty rarely when it comes to federal legislation. It's usually having to do with state legislation. So I guess, having answered those questions, you know, my comments would simply be, it seems to be most likely redundant, and I'm not sure why it was introduced. And knowing if that's all we know about it, I don't think I'm prepared to, you know, put the city's weight behind this amendment to the, to the federal law at this point. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comment? Mayor Protem Miller?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, without, since, you know, the city, city manager Kilbride didn't know, I just pulled this up, and it's, it's actually been referred in the Senate. It passed the House, and it was actually bipartisan as it went through the House. I don't know why the Senate hasn't voted on it, but what it does is it mends the Outer Continental Shelf Lands Act, prohibit the sector of the interior, including in any leasing programs, certain planning areas, and for other purposes. It's, the act may be cited as the Coastal Marine Economies Protection Act. So it's basically the same thing. It's already been voted on in the House. I'm not sure why, as a city, hey, we're all, we're all for protecting the environment, but, but it's already going through and went through in a bipartisan way. I'm not sure why there's another piece of legislation, which basically does the exact same thing, being floated, because it should pass and whatever happens in the Senate will happen in the Senate at that point. But anyway, I just think it comes off as strange to me on why we, we have a, a local politician trying to pass redundant legislation. And, and like Councilmember Vexoric said, we don't really get involved in these very often. We do sometimes. He's not wrong. It's not unprecedented. But it's pretty rare that, that the city puts its weight behind something, especially something that's already passed on. I just, this sounds like there's a lot of gamesmanship going on at the federal level, and I, and I just don't think the city should be involved in that. Thanks.
I appreciate the comments from my colleagues. But we've spent more time talking about this than it would have taken to sign this letter. And whether it's redundant or not, I, I have no problem doing it, because I think what we're doing is falling into the same trap that maybe we're, we are judging our federal representatives for falling into. This is a good idea for our local economy. If it's redundant, let them sort it out in Washington. I have no problem getting behind this. Quite frankly, if we could, if they get this one passed or someone up there tells them it's redundant, maybe we can quit talking about this again and move on to things that are more relevant to Dana Point. Because while this is important, and we've learned especially recently, the importance of, we, we know the importance of a safe, clean ocean environment to our economy and our environment in and of itself. But there are items that are pressing for our local economy and for our residents that we're going to talk about here later tonight, like undergrounding utility lines. You know, there, I read the IIJA this weekend as it relates to our agenda tonight. And at $1.2 trillion of infrastructure spending, there's not a penny that's going to help our residents on Bremerton put their power lines underground. In a $75 billion state budget surplus that they say they had last year and spent this year, there is not a penny to put power lines underground for us. In fact, they're doing away with the 28 program, which is the tiny little paltry amount of money we had to help. So I am more than happy to support this and move on, quite frankly. Just like I am ready to move on with tonight's agenda and talk about things that are germane and actionable. You know, I, I appreciate that, that Mr. Levin is doing this and that he cares about the environment, whether it's already been done and the environment's already cared for, not out there, doesn't matter to me. I'm happy to sign this letter, assuming that the council approves that authority tonight. Anyway. Time for me to, to put this behind us. It'd be great, I think, to not have to talk about this again and to move on to, to other, to other issues. So any other comments? We have a motion and a second. No more comments. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Frost. Councilmember Vexoric.
Nope.
Councilmember Valar.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Miller.
No.
Mayor Federico.
Aye.
That motion passes three to two.
Thank you very much. It is now after 6:30, which means we can have a public hearing on redistricting. Item number 12 is the redistricting process required by state law. And tonight, we're going to have a public hearing. And, uh, tonight we're going to have a public hearing regarding the state mandated redistricting process pursuant to Election Code Sections 21607 and 21607.1. Um, Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, tonight is our third of four required public hearings related to the redistricting process. Uh, at the podium this evening is, uh, Kay Vincent from, um, National, um, Demographics Corporation, NDC, uh, who is the city's demographer that has been assisting us, uh, through this process. And, and really, perhaps for the sake of the, uh, the audience we have this evening that might not be up to speed, uh, on, you know, what we're talking about, I thought I'd give a couple of brief remarks on the history of, you know, how it is that we got here. Uh, so in two and, uh, 17, I believe it was, uh, we received a demand letter from an attorney that was, um, asserting that the city was not in compliance with the California Voting Rights Act, uh, the California Voting Rights Act. By the way, this is a very complicated issue. I'm going to go kind of, just kind of right to the point of it all, um, but there's a lot more to it than this. California Voting Rights, Rights Act, i- in essence says that if you have something called racially polarized voting, um, that the only cure to that is to go from at-large elections like the city used to have to district-based elections. Um, cases challenging or fighting back against, um, the kinds of allegations that the city received are virtually fruitless. Um, there's a number of cities in California that have spent millions and millions of dollars fighting this issue, um, and they all have been unsuccessful. Um, the cities have incurred, as I said, millions of dollars trying to defend, uh, these issues. So rather than, uh, fight the issue, the city council, uh, elected to go to, um, a district-based election system, so commencing in the 2018 elections, uh, the city was divided into the uh, five districts that are shown up on the screen at the moment. And we have been, uh, electing our city council members on a district basis since that time. It's in essence, uh, it's a safe harbor. If you, um, have a district-based election, you can't be sued for being in violation of the, uh, the California Voting Rights Act. The, um, w- once we went to districting in 2018, uh, we are required, once every 10 years after the census, to relook at, uh, the district boundaries and make adjustments as may be necessary under the statutes that are out there. So it seems like we just went through this just a couple of years ago, and we did, and we're only going through it again just because of a function of timing. The, uh, census data just came out recently. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, this is our third of four hearings. We're required to have four hearings. Uh, at the first two hearings, uh, we, uh, had a public hearing just to accept input, uh, and comments. We also have had a website up, uh, for people to provide comments. Uh, at, at this, our third hearing, uh, we are now able to present a proposed map. Um, NDC will be, uh, discussing a, a map that they are proposing for consideration. Um, at the fourth hearing, or following the fourth hearing, the council will be in a position to adopt, uh, a map. Uh, as I mentioned a moment ago, we do have a website, uh, or we do have a link on the city's website where the public can make comments and can offer their own maps, and we encourage the public, uh, to use that tool and to provide us with any input they may have. That website also, uh, is a place for people to co- make comments on the process. And I thought it'd be worthwhile just to note that the comments we have received thus far, for the most part, fall into two categories. One category is that people just don't like districting and, um, you know, unless the council decides to change course, that decision's already been made to, you know, fall into the safe harbor I mentioned. The council has decided to, uh, go with this process. And the second, uh, group of comments, uh, are comments suggesting that we should, uh, go to four districts and an at-large mayor. And, uh, again, that would, uh, require a change of direction from the council, and I think it's worthwhile for the members, the public that made those comments to understand that the safe harbor that I mentioned would not apply in that case. Uh, there are certainly a number of cities out there, uh, including in Orange County, that have at-large mayors, but there has not been any litigation over the issue as to whether, in fact, uh, that solves the, uh, the issue that, um, that the, uh, people who are raising these B R A challenges, uh, bring up, those racially polarized voting issue. Um, and as I mentioned, the only true safe harbor at the moment, absent some new case law out there or some statutory change, is to have the, um, the pure districting without an at-large mayor. So, uh, those are my comments, um, as sort of an introduction, and I will turn it over, uh, to Ms. Vincent at this point.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, staff, and the community. National Demographics Corporation is happy to be here this evening for the city's third public hearing for the redistricting required because of the decen- decennial census. Oh, way too many. I gotta get the right touch. As Patrick summarized, um, the redistricting process is set out in the law, the new Fair Maps Act, which took effect in 2020. And it required two pre-map hearings, and the first one was a workshop held by the city on June 23rd, a workshop hearing, and the second one on July 20th. Those were to educate and solicit input from the community, particularly about communities and neighborhoods. Then the census was received mid-August, August 12th, and that was delayed considerably because of the pandemic. Usually it comes in about March or April. But we did get the 2020 census. Then following that, the state is required to adjust that population with prisoner-adjusted population. And that came out September 20th. And then again, it was revised and updated on September 27th, so fairly late. Now, we, here, here we are this evening on November 16th for the third public hearing to consider the map and to, to consider revisions to the draft map. Then, uh, the fourth public hearing will be held February 15th. A map's required to be posted for consideration seven days in advance of that. And, uh, that's when the map that the council decides to adopt would be introduced by the ordinance. The legal deadline for the city to complete this process is April 17th. As discussed before, there are several laws, um, that fall into different categories, as well as some, um, other items that you can consider or might have as goals. The first column there addresses the federal law of equal population, and the law provides that you can have a 10% deviation among your districts between the least populated and the most populated. The Federal Voting Rights Act protects, provides for protected classes, and that includes, um, racial, particularly black, and minority language individuals. And so we'll look at some of the statistics for that. It, um, cannot be the predominant factor, but it can be a factor in where you decide your districts go. And there cannot be any racial gerrymandering. And the second category is the state law, the Fair Maps Act, which I mentioned became effective in January of 2020. And not only provides that process for four public hearings, but it also provides the criteria that you have to utilize in determining your districts. And it goes even further in that it has to be in ranked order. So the districts have to be first and foremost geographically contiguous. Um, you need to consider neighborhoods and communities of interest. And I know that Dana Point has several that you've identified. They can be around a park like your Del Abyspo Park, or, um, just socioeconomic factors. That's how you identify communities. Um, they need to have easily identifiable boundaries, whether they be streets or natural corridors. And they also need to be compact, where you can't skip one group of people to get to another group of people. And you'll notice that we don't talk about partisan or political parties here because that's prohibited. Then, as I mentioned, once you've, uh, met the federal laws and the state laws in your map that you're considering, then you can look at other factors like minimizing the voter shift uh, to a different election year. So if you had to change your districts, you might have somebody that voted in 2020 but wouldn't be eligible to vote again until 2026. Um, you want to try to avoid that when you can, or at least minimize that. You also might consider respecting the voters' choices of who they've elected to be in office now and that continuity in office. And you can consider future population growth, but again, you have to make sure you don't go over the 10% deviation. Um, and another goal is to preserve the core of the existing districts. So with the new census that came in, along with, uh, one district block that you have that's split here in Dana Point, you can see that there's, based on the census, 33,144 people. And what's kind of nice is that the deviation came in with the final figures at 6.95%. So Dana Point's actually currently balanced with your current districts. The, the city is required to look at the total population, uh, when they draw their maps. But we also look at the citizen voting age population, that bottom bar graphs. And you can see that there's, um, it's 26,997. And that's about 6,200 difference, but those are the citizens that are 18 and the citizens eligible to vote and that are 18. Um, then that middle bar addresses more the protected classes. And, um, you can see that there's, um, a deviation in the Hispanic population between 10 and 27%. And, um, in the Asian, it only varies from four to 7%. And there's really no significant concentration of protected classes that would be eligible to, um, vote for a, a member from their protected class in Dana Point. That 6.95% um, is a little bit different than the first figures that were presented here, and I'll go over that more a little bit later. I guess right now. So, as I mentioned, there were some differences in the first data that you had. It showed a 15, I believe, 63% deviation, which meant you would have to change districts. And so I'd like to spend some time and go over the, the technical data that resulted in this difference so that it's understandable. Under the California Elections Code, cities are required to use the state prisoner-adjusted data, which we got kind of late, September 27th. Then the delay in the census due to the pandemic, um, meant deadlines, I mean, delayed the process for the city council, but it didn't delay the legal deadline for adoption of the map. So NDC bridged the gap with estimated data in early 2021. And knowing it would be replaced with, uh, proper data when it came time, which was not that long ago. The estimated data from NDC was pretty accurate in areas with larger populations. But when we got into smaller geographies like Dana Point, it was less accurate, less precise, because a small number created a bigger percentage difference. The 2017, when the demand letter came, but when it was adopted, was 2018, contained several split census blocks. These blocks, um, had to be split to obtain accurate final population numbers so that you could be balanced back in 2018. In addition, the census also modified several block boundaries in Dana Point to align with the satellite aerial imaging. And there may be a slight visual difference, but there's no people that have moved. So NDC adjusted that 2020 demographic table and included all of the above factors. So the original estimate, as I mentioned, came in at, this is 15.3, I think it was 15.63. And, uh, the current districts, when we showed you the demographics a couple of slides back, showed you 6.95% with, within that 10% mean. So NDC is proposing that the council consider the current district map, mostly because there, you do, the population balances. You do fall within that 10% deviation. You meet all the legal requirements with that current map for the next redistricting cycle, and there's really no need to make any changes. As, um, Patrick said earlier, the city would like some comments, and there's a site at comment@danaPoint.org. Or you can submit something in writing, and of course, the speaker's here this evening. Um, I will mention that, um, I know there have been some comments about adding some population to Capistrano Beach area. And actually, that was reviewed, but even one block there means the whole, um, each district that, that 10% goes away cannot be met with even just the addition of one block. So that was considered, but it's not going to work and stay within the population deviation. So that concludes the presentation, unless you have any questions.
Any questions from the council? No, thank you very much for a very easily understandable, uh, presentation to a complex issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. City Attorney, do you have any more?
Yes, just to wrap up, Mr. Mayor, the proposal, um, that you have in front of you at this point for consideration is to simply re-adopt the map that we already have, and that was fairly obvious, I think, from the presentation, but I just kind of wanted to, um, you know, sort of highlight that point. It doesn't mean that between now and the next public hearing that we might not get more import, input that the council can't consider on its own if it wants to make changes. And the opportunity to, um, consider any additional maps would be at the, uh, the next hearing. Um, and then the council, obviously, will have an opportunity to, uh, vote and adopt the final map at that time. That concludes my reports.
Thanks. I, I have one just very sort of technical procedural question. If for some reason, uh, we get input on a changed map between now and the next meeting, we could theoretically make a change at the next meeting and adopt that map. It's not like having to do a new first reading like we have to do with some
That's exactly correct.
readings of ordinance. It's just to clear that up for anybody.
Yeah, a- any, any maps that are proposed, uh, need to be, uh, presented to the public on the city's website at least seven days before, um, the time that they're adopted. So that's the only requirement. So just as a, for instance, if you were at the fourth meeting and at that time you came up with some change that you wanted to consider, we'd have to put that proposed new map, uh, on the website for seven days.
Gotcha.
And you'd have to adopt it at the next meeting.
Okay.
Any changes between now and then, you wouldn't have to worry about that.
All right. Thank you. Uh, any other questions for the staff before we open up this public hearing? No? Um, Adam Clerk, do you have any public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Uh, I will say for the rec, well, I'll open the public hearing first. So the public hearing is now open. I will say that the council did receive a number of written, um, comments directed to us. Everything from, everything is great the way it is, to, I'd like to see, uh, the 92624 zip code put together as a voting district. And I'd like to see, uh, an elected mayor and for council members, um, uh, various range of, anyway, we received all of them and had a chance to read them before this meeting. Um, and if there are no public, public comments live, I will close the public hearing. I will reopen the public hearing. If, go ahead. Yeah, if, step up, um, yeah, state your name, city of residence, and, uh, we'll let you speak publicly.
Hi, my name's Robbie Robinson, and I live in Dana Point.
Okay.
I live on Copper Lantern. I'm on the side that is on the east side of Copper Lantern, and I'm in your district.
Yes, you are.
No offense, but I want to be on the other side.
None?
My problem is, all my neighbors, my people that are, my community are on the other side of the street. Why is my street the only one that's split down the middle?
We'll address, yeah, we, uh,
So, that's my comment, that I would like to see my city, my street as one group. And, and geographically, there's a hill behind us, and it would make sense to put that group that's over not really, because we're part of the original Lantern Village. We have the, the markers on the sidewalks that say, uh, 1920 on them, and so, or, no, yeah. Anyway, and so we want to be a part of the regular part of the, the Lantern Village instead of the outcast, the kind of stepchild. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And ma'am, before you do leave, can you fill out a written speaker form so the clerk can have that for the record? Perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may.
Yes.
I'll resist the very easy softball that was thrown up about where someone might want to live for voting purposes. And simply say that that was a perfect example of what we genuinely are looking for. One of the criteria that we have to look at in the mapping process is something called community of interests. We want to try and keep neighborhoods together as best as we can. Unfortunately, we have a lot of balancing that we have to do. One of the things that we are also required to do is to, is to population balance the various districts. All the statistics that you saw up here about the deviations that we were talking about force us sometimes to just have to make choices that are as good as we can, where we have a natural barrier like a major street to use as a dividing line. So that's how that decision was made previously. You know, in the absence of a change, that's how we would make that decision now. But if people feel strongly about wanting certain neighborhoods to be moved around, that's the kind of input we would very much like to have. And we can consider that and, you know, play with the maps and rebalance them if necessary to achieve both the goal of maybe moving a neighborhood by one street in one place. And then we can potentially move a different neighborhood and then a street by another place. So it's, it's really meant to be an open and transparent process, and we really encourage you to provide any input that you might have on our website. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. I will now close the public hearing. And before we get into discussion, do you need a motion to recommend that we stick with this map? Or we just, we're just having the hearing, right?
At this point, the hearing's done, and it's effectively a receive and file.
Okay, that's what I thought. Then we'll bring it up here. We can, we can certainly comment and provide any input. I will start by addressing the question. I completely appreciate where you're coming from there. And that is an interesting one. We looked at that one, especially when we thought that the the population was going to be big enough to have to make some changes. And I will say, what's not unique is that many of the boundaries for our voting districts are streets. So you have someone on one side of a street. The other end of our district up on Blue Lantern, we have residents on one side of Blue Lantern that are in District Three and residents on the other side that are in Two. And, and the same thing down in Doheny Village and many other places. And I, and I get that it's strange, but it's funny. As soon as you then try to go one block one way or another, you notice the deviations in our, in our voting districts. It's easy to talk about them in percentages, but in cases, you're talking about twenty or forty or fifty-two people. And as soon as you move one block, now you've got to go somewhere else in another neighborhood and take that number of people out of that block, and you create sort of the same problem somewhere else. And I, we completely understand where you're coming from. And I will tell you that a lot of hard work went into, if we had to make these changes, any changes, where you would make them and minimizing the impact to people. And the flip side of the coin of making a change now is that, for example, if you were moved from District Three to District Four, you would not vote next year, and you haven't voted since two thousand and eighteen. So you would go a long time without getting a chance to vote for city council. And this is something that, you know, people have made voiced their concerns about in the past, not getting a chance to vote in a certain election. And if, every time we, if we move people from a district, one, two, or three to, to, to four or five, they will have lost their opportunity to vote in an election. And that's a big price to pay for what might be more of a nicety of having the same district as, as your neighbors across the street. The other, I would say, luxury of being on a boundary, if you want to see it this way, is that you've got two council members who care about your street. You really do. Whereas if you were a number of blocks over, the council member might not spend as much time on that block. Certainly wouldn't be getting as many emails or phone calls from people on your block. But there are plenty of times I've gone to a neighborhood or a house or an issue with Councilmember Frost and stood there with Councilmember Villar down in Doheny Village, where our, where our, near where the boundaries meet. Not that we don't all represent everyone in town. It's not that big a town that we're that different in different parts of town. But you get two people who pay attention to the issues there. And the secret is you need three votes up here to get something done. You're two-thirds of the way there. So there are other benefits, but I, we do appreciate where you're coming from. It was a lot. Other council members, any comments? Mr. Frost?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I know Ms. Robinson. I wanted to echo what the mayor just said. It does seem sort of contrary to what you would, you would think upfront. But you want to be on a, on a, on a barrier. He's exactly right. And none of us sort of think, I am, happen to be a Lantern Village guy. I always thought of myself as one prior to getting up here. But being right on a dividing line is actually really powerful. And I happen to echo exactly what you were thinking there. So, and believe me, once we get up here, nobody's sort of thinking Lantern Village versus Capo Beach. We don't, I know there's some comments out publicly, but I know none of us think that way. I know staff doesn't either. So it, it, it may seem a little strange across the street, but I'll tell you what, you're, you're certainly getting good service with this guy over there. So, thanks.
Anybody else? Mr. Villar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's a common mistake that we make, and I make it all the time, by calling my district Capo Beach. They're not one in the same, right? It's District Five, District One, District Two, District Three, District Four, District Five. It's easy to call it Lantern Village, because then you can visualize where it is. But, you know, I've heard the argument many times that, well, we want nine-two-six-two-four to be together. And mathematically, if it made sense, I would be all for that as well. But I don't want a mistake that Capo Beach and District Five are one in the same. They're not. It just so happens that a majority of District Five is, or the majority of Capo Beach is in District Five. And I'm going to continue to make that mistake, because it's easy for me to refer to as Capo Beach. But, you know, if the numbers don't, don't match, well, then Doheny Village doesn't fall into District Five. And like the mayor said, it's actually works for the benefit of Doheny Village. I actually do believe that, because I certainly care about Doheny Village, because my residents go down there and shop down there, right? And then I know Mayor Federico cares about it, because it's in his district. So for me, that seems to work out. But if the numbers had shifted and, and there was a population shift and all of nine-two-six-two-four happened to be in District Five, I wouldn't be mad at that either. But I, I, I think we, we gotta, gotta get away from this idea that Lantern Village or Monarch Beach or Capo Beach, right? It's, it's really district numbers for a reason, so that they're not divided that way.
Mayor Porten Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to echo some things that were said here tonight. You know, I believe Councilmember Vixor and I were the only two that still on the council when the district went into a place. And I'm going to say what I did back then. I, I don't see myself as a district guy. I see myself as a Dana Point representative. You know, we spend a lot of time on Doheny Village right now. We're trying to get that rezoned. I know Councilmember Vixor and I've spent a lot of time over the last seven years trying to get that done and figuring out a way to fund it. I was here for the second phase of the Lantern District. That was important to the community. And so I, I, I want to get away from Capo Beach versus Monarch Beach versus Dana Point, because it just doesn't exist in my mind. We're all one city. We all have needs. And, you know, some people are going to get more attention at one point, because that's where the projects are at that point. I mean, you know, it started with the Lantern District. We were really busy there for a while, and now we're down in Doheny Village. Now we're looking at Capistrano Beach itself, on how we're going to try to protect that resource to the community. How do we connect Doheny Village to it? There's a lot of work going on, and not one person at this diocese sits back and goes, that's not my district. I'm not going to worry about that. We're going to figure out a way to fund it, and we're going to figure out a way to get it done, because it's the right thing to do for our residents. So I, I'm really happy that these maps turned out the way that they did and that we didn't have to start looking at, you know, neighborhoods of interest again in dividing people up. I mean, that's one of the toughest things we did four years ago, was figuring out how do we draw these lines? Because lines, let's face it, they divide. And that's not what we're about. This has always been a very tight community. We all take care of each other, and, and I don't even like saying I'm District One or District Two or District Three. We're Dana Point. And we're going to take care of each other, no matter what district we happen to represent or where we happen to live, because, you know, we're all, we're all in the same city. And it's probably, if it's not the greatest city in the world, it's, it's up there. I mean, this is a very, very special place, and you can see by the number of international visitors we get, where they come from and why they want to be here. They want to experience what we get every single day. So thanks, staff, for all your hard work, and NDC to come up with these data numbers for us. Thanks.
Mr. Vixor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to be really brief. I think the mayor protest said it well. We are the last two remaining dinosaurs from the pre-district era. I do want to say, for those of you who were with us, none, none of us wanted to go to districts. As you heard in the presentation, we're in districts because we were forced into them. And what that means, so I think I want to respond to some of the comments, the idea you live on one street, but you've got two council members. No matter where you live in Dana Point, you've got five council members. If you, you know, you call me, I don't care what district you live in, as the mayor protest said, it's not going to matter. Of course, I'm going to give a courtesy call to whatever district representative there is. But we just want to be clear that, you know, we, as a, as a council, I think each one of us, I, I try not to speak for all my councilmembers, but I think we all view ourselves as representatives of the whole city. So we do welcome your comments about how the districts have to be drawn, because we have to do it. But please don't ever think of yourself as I'm only being represented by one person on this council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Mr. Vixor, and that is very well said. You know, we, we all get emails, phone calls, reached out to by residents on a lot of issues. And I will, since you guys have all alluded to it, I will sum it up and say, we all very much consider ourselves the council members for the entire city. I do think if there's a benefit to districting, it is nice to have a, as a resident, to have a push button and the, the one guy or lady, hopefully here at some point, that you know that you can reach out to, and, and that is the person that maybe most focuses on the issues in your neighborhood. But every one of us considers ourselves a council member for the entire city. So to end this on a, a very friendly note, Mr. City Attorney, I think we're good. Do you need anything else from us?
We have completed what we are legally required to do.
All right. Then we are done with that item, and that we can move on to item number, we're going out of order here. Fourteen, under new business. Item number fourteen is citywide assessment of overhead utilities. And the recommended action is that the council authorizes a consultant services agreement with NV5. I'm not going to read all the details. I think we're going to get all that stuff in the staff report and then authorize the use of funding outlined in federal fiscal impact section to provide budget for this work effort. Mr. City Manager?
Our Public Works Director, Matt Sinekory, will kick this off for us.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, and community members that are here for this item. I will try to be very brief tonight, but I do want to touch on a few things. First, the item before the council tonight is to consider an agreement with NV5 that'll basically do three things. Assess the city for where underground utilities exist and map them. Number two, develop estimates to underground those utilities. And lastly, address the relatively dated assessment district policy that the city has, to update it to current regulations and to make it, to be perfectly candid, as user-friendly as we can. It's a little hard to use. That's the third item. Couple key things regarding the scope of work. First, when you look at undergrounding and you do estimates, looking at arterial streets, really busy ones, versus small residential streets, those estimates will be done differently, primarily because the cost to do undergrounding is very different on those streets. Between traffic control, putting things back into place, all those things are very different. Schedule for this work, and I know it's going to be a topic for tonight. One of the key things is how quickly SDG&E will make mapping available to the city. We're actively working on that, and I spoke to them this afternoon. And like any utility, they're going to hold those things pretty close to the belt. We're trying to get that information, and again, that will drive a lot of the schedule. I do want to highlight also in your staff report on page four, there is a typo in the agreement. That number in the payment section, the written section says forty-five thousand. It's actually supposed to be forty-nine thousand. So that number correctly should be forty-nine thousand. And lastly, our consultant, Jeff Cooper, if you can stand back there, Jeff's here in the back. Jeff, thank you very much for making yourself available to this community. He's very well-recognized in the undergrounding world and would be a great asset to this community. So with that, I'll turn it over to the council for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We can do specific questions before we do public comment, but just questions. Mr. Villar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Sinekory, so I have a question for you. The first part of this item, complete citywide assessment and map the location of existing overhead utilities. I think you said underground, but you meant overhead, but that's okay. Doesn't that already exist? How, how does, how does SDG&E not have this map already of where utilities are? I don't understand that.
So they have it in some form. How user-friendly it is to the community is another question, because when you look at those map, maps, your head spins off, because they're really hard to use. We want to put something in place that the council and the community can understand.
You got to dumb it down for us Marines. I get, I get, I'm good, I'm good there.
I figure if I'm getting confused, everybody's going to get confused.
Okay, that, that was really the only thing that I can really understand. It seems like this map should already exist. But, okay, thank you.
Mayor Porten Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Sinekory, you said there were three things that this is going to do. One of the things we, we are going to have to discuss at some point is the cost, if we're going to try to underground this. Could you also have them identify funding sources for us? There's a huge infrastructure bill out there, and how, how do we maybe get a piece of that? Is that something we could add?
Absolutely. I think maybe Mike Kilroy would like to say.
There were, we are looking closely at the infrastructure bill that was just passed. On first blush, it doesn't look like there's money available for our types of lines or more large transmission projects. But we are already engaging Congressman Levin's office in particular. But we're going to see how the current, the trillion-dollar one they just passed, how they decide on how they're going to allocate out the money. We're going to keep an eye on that and go after what we can find, but also continue pushing for additional funding.
Right, and, and not just that bill, but if there's other state sources or county sources or whatever we can find, environmental sources maybe, right? I mean, there might be some environmental money out there to do this as well. So, thanks.
All right. We do have a number of public comments, and I'll just call you guys off individually and ask you to come up. And I'll remind everyone that you have three minutes. First is Marilyn and Len Gardner, who would like to speak together from Dana Point.
Mayor, councilman, and staff, and the executive committee, and members of PAL that are here. Very grateful to all of you. My name is Marilyn Gardner. I'm a seven-and-a-half-year resident of Dana Point. My husband, Len Gardner, and I are the co-founders of the PAL Coalition. We want to thank the city council for working in collaboration with PAL and for proposing to fund a study for citywide assessment of the overhead utilities, which is item fourteen on the agenda. I want to thank the council for taking time and attention and devotion to this vital subject over the past year. We are encouraged by your interest and action. The time has come, the time is right, for us to invest in safer utilities. On one hand, we have global warming and the constant threat of more deadly fires in California. Utility companies have been held accountable for many of these fires, and they've been made to pay. On the other hand, Dana Point has an action group of concerned citizens, the PAL Coalition, about three hundred members strong, who have come together over the past year with a common goal to make our community safer and much more aesthetically pleasing. At the same time, we have a nation- At the same time, we have a nation embarking on spending more than a trillion dollars for new infrastructure. Locally, the harbor development is in motion, and downtown Dana Point is enjoying a boom, with over a hundred beautiful new apartments, and also new commercial space. The time has come for our poles and lines to come down. If we want it badly enough, I believe the funding will follow our desire. And our desire to see Dana Point go forward into this millennium proudly, safely, and with an unblemished view. Thanks. Len?
We're a package deal. You get two for the price of one. My name is Len Gardner. The city of Dana Point, in its Lookout Magazine, which everyone here has seen at various times, says that Dana Point is, quote, "setting the standard for an exceptional livable city in a vibrant world-class place." But the overhead power lines tell a different story. They say, "third world, not world-class." The reasons to put the lines underground are many. Here are the first five that come to mind. Aesthetics, safety, reliability, property values, and our city's image as seen by visitors. It's just common sense to understand the extent of a problem before trying to fix it. That's what this study will do. It will quantify the scope, how many residents, residences, how many streets, and what's the overall cost. This study is a sensible and essential first step. Thank you.
Thank you both. The next speaker is Robbie Robinson from Dana Point.
Hello again. My name's Robbie Robinson, and I live in Dana Point. I live on Copper Lantern, in Dana Point, which you already know, too. I'm in the big white building, and there are nine units in our complex, two buildings, and our lines are all underground. The builder put them all underground. But I'm a member of poles and lines, because I have a very nice ocean view, once I get past all the poles and the lines to see the ocean. And I would like to let you know that there are people who have underground lines, who are concerned, and want those lines and poles eliminated. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Julie Eros, from Capistrano Beach.
Good evening. My name is Julie Eros, and I'm a resident of Capistrano Beach. Thank you for considering a study to determine the extent of the overhead utilities in Dana Point. I think most residents and visitors to our city would agree that one of the most significant assets is our beautiful ocean views. When these views are marred by overhead utility wires, it definitely has a negative effect on our aesthetics and our property values. I understand that the city has funds available to spend on undergrounding utilities and public thoroughfares under Rule 20A. I, I took a look at the list of potential utility projects included in the city's staff report, was dated ten, one, nineteen. Item sixteen, page eleven. I was surprised to see that the list doesn't include Via California, one of the most unsightly streets in all of Dana Point, in terms of overhead wires. This street, which leads from Capistrano, from Camino Los Maris, down to Camino Capistrano, looks straight at the ocean. It is also a major thoroughfare into Capitol Beach directly from the five freeway. I don't understand why the street's not included on the list. It's odd. In, in terms of both aesthetics and public safety, as well as its status as one of the three major streets leading into Capitol Beach, I hope you'll consider adding Via California to this list. I understand there's a, was a collapse of a pole along the street not too long ago, and I fear that this tangled bunch of wires is going to become dangerous if they're dislodged through high winds or storms. I also note that the number-one priority on the list is Camino Capistrano between, oh, Camino de Australia and San Clemente. And yet, I understand that the city is contemplating assigning funds to a project on Stonehill Drive, which is assigned prior to number three. Can someone explain why priority number one is not being done before priority three? Thank you for appreciating the need to include all public thoroughfares in Rule 20A projects. I hope there will be a public meeting to thoroughly explore these limited funds. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Rich Hein, is that correct, from Capistrano Beach? Sir?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council Members. My name is Rich Heinie, I live in Capistrano Beach. I've lived here for about four years, five years now. I was in San Clemente before, I used to come over here, I loved Dana Point, one of the reasons I moved here. And I have seen the, the city do tremendous improvements in the Lander District, the Doheny Village upgrade planning is underway, and Capistrano Beach, which was also known as Capistrano by the Sea, has many areas that are unsightly and dangerous, overhead electric cable, phone lines, poles, and need to catch up with the rest of the city. As an owner on Camino Capistrano, I would like to state that I will pay for an assessment to put these lines underground. However, I believe that we should start with a street via California, as it has the biggest problem with the overhead lines. I also would like to state, Mr. Molar made a great comment today, when he was talking about the Doheny Village reconstruction, or the, you know, what's the right word, remodeling of that area? And he indicated, you know, we, we're going to make that happen, we're going to find the funds. I think everybody's probably in agreement that we need to get these underlying, these poles and lines underground. It's a matter of finding the funds. That kind of an attitude is what we need to make this thing happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Tony Nelson from Capistrano Beach, you are next, ma'am.
Hi, good evening. My name is Tony Nelson, Capistrano Beach. I was very happy to see this item on the agenda tonight, and I commend the PAL's Coalition for their advocacy. They've done a really good job. Cities throughout Southern California are recognizing that the vast improvement to aesthetics, property values, and public safety that are possible through undergrounding public public utilities. In Dana Point, our views are incredible. I mean, that's what Dana Point is all about. It's an integral part of our love for this city, and the beautiful environment that we all share, it belongs to all of us. Every time utilities are undergrounded, it not only benefits the immediate homeowner, but it improves aesthetics for every resident and visitor to Dana Point. My home, by the way, is undergrounded, and I am a member of PAL, and very happy to support this effort. This project is an important first step. I am hopeful that in addition to identifying the locations of overhead lines and wires, the consultant will also identify neighborhood segments that would make sense geographically and logistically, in terms of forming a future CFD. CFDs meaning Community Facility Districts, to fund undergrounding. This is how it's usually done, you know, through long-term bonds that are added to your property taxes. And I, you know, I'd love to see the infrastructure bill help us out, but the reality is, usually property owners end up paying for the bulk of this. So it'd be really useful if the consultant could also say, okay, these streets would make sense to do together, these streets would make sense, there's geographic issues with hills and so on, I just think it's something we should add if we can. I'm also hopeful that the city will commit to assisting neighborhoods in navigating the CFD process, should they decide to go forward with undergrounding projects. And I'm sure that that's part of the deal. This study will not only help to identify the extent of the issue, but help homeowner, homeowners work together to realize the economies of scale inherent in bigger projects. Obviously, if we do one street, you know, there's going to be a certain cost, but if we're doing five, or ten, or fifteen streets, it's going to be way more economical. It will also help the city schedule and prioritize roadwork, resurfacing, other utilities, and even fiber optics, to ensure that we dig once for maximum efficiency, don't keep digging the same street. There is also a public safety aspect to this project. Years ago, when I lived in North Tustin, we had an electrical fire on a street near me, and about thirty houses burned to the ground, after Santa Ana winds took, took out some electrical wires. So this is really a, a public safety issue as well. The first priority in that instance, when rebuilding started, was to underground the utilities before they built anything. They weren't going to take another chance. Thank you for taking this important first step to help citizens work together to form CFDs, and move forward with the removal of unsightly lines and poles. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Aaron Mendelson from Dana Point.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My wife wrote me into this, so, I, I live in, on Kalida, next to Copper Lantern, there you go. So, I work as a, I'm in the communications industry broadband, deliver broadband via satellite, so, talk to you about the need to enhance our broadband connectivity, in the senses that our broadband usage is going up roughly thirty percent a year, and the current infrastructure really doesn't support the kind of bandwidth that we're going to be using every day. Most people are switching from TV to, to basically on-demand. And so laying fiber while you dig up the ground to lay power, is definitely the right way to go. There's actually funds available in the government for rural defense, or rural development opportunity funds and broadband initiative, that maybe you could utilize to assist with the costs of laying groundwork, in, in the senses that you could get Google Fiber or other broadband companies to assist in the development.
Thank you very much. And I believe this is the final speaker, Mr. Mike Yusef from Dana Point. Before you start, sir, Madam Clerk, do you have any more?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Hi, Mike Yusef, I hope you guys don't mind, I'm with the Poles and Lines Coalition. Hope you don't mind, I bought a couple dozen of my friends, and there's another dozen or so outside that couldn't make it in, so next time we'll have more seating. But it's great that everybody showed up, so I appreciate that. I'm not going to repeat what everybody already said, we know this is an important topic for the community, we have several hundred members that support that, some who already have lines underground, others who don't. The lines are a blight to our community, they are third-world, as someone said, and, and most parts of the country no longer have above-ground utilities. So I'm very thankful to the mayor, to Councilman Frost, to City Manager, and to Mr. Sinekory for having started listening to us, as we meet with you individually. We appreciate your time, we appreciate you taking this seriously, and the initiative that you've put behind this, that you have in front of the council today. I heard all the love earlier, we talked about redistricting, so I expect it's going to be an easy five-to-nothing vote on, on funding this project. Having said that, one caveat I will say, without taking too much time, is it'd be very easy to turn this into an exercise in rewriting the assessment district rules. And I hope that doesn't happen. And I hope it doesn't happen, because we had Rule 20 for a very long time, and nobody in this room can remember the last time that any homeowners took advantage of it. And so therefore, it's incumbent on us to figure out how to go solve the problem. Yes, it's expensive. Yes, we know the city only takes in forty million dollars a year, and that doesn't come anywhere near what we need for a project like this. But if we all agree this is something we want to do, not just for us, but as a legacy for this city, then let's all work together to go figure out how to make it happen, and not just push the problem back to the homeowners, and let it sit for another forty years. Thank you so much for your time, thank you for taking up this cause, and thank you to all my friends here in PAL for joining us this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That concludes the public comment on this item. I guess we can...
Guys, that I'm wrong about something. It was just in today's Orange County Register, you talk about public monies. So you may talk to the folks in Laguna Beach, because a direct quote, they had a mayor's meeting, I guess, yesterday, and they were talking about the infrastructure bill. A direct quote is, "The poles on Laguna Canyon Road, it's just dangerous, and we need to fix that, and it's very expensive, so we need a little help." So they're already on this as well, so let's make sure we at least play our full-court defense and get a piece of that pie.
Thank you. I was at that meeting, and it might be, we're, we're not going to give up. Unless those power lines carry more than a thousand megawatts, though, they're not getting paid for by federal money, unfortunately, unless we work really, really hard. And before we, we, I guess, I'll make a motion to approve the recommended action.
Second.
Okay. Motion is second, I'm going to leave off with just a couple real quick comments. Mr. Sinekory, don't, you have a couple of representative CFD that you guys are going to study, just to get a sense of what this could look like? Or are you not still going to do that?
We are going to do that, yes.
So to answer Ms. Nelson's sort of comment, they, they already planned to do that. And this is the first step. We need to get, understand the scale, and Mr. Yusef is right, it's going to take leadership. This is gonna, we're going to have to figure out a, a long-term plan. None of it gets done without this study first. So I'm happy to support this. Fellow council members, any comment? Mr. Mayor Pro-Tan Miller?
Hey, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Sinekory, as, as you're going through this, one of the things I've always talked about is the city can only do so much. We, we can get involved and get them undergrounded on the street, but one of the biggest costs to this, to the homeowner is connecting to the home. And we have talked about this over and over, and we've always, we have put it back on the homeowner and the neighborhood, and said, listen, you need to get the majority of your neighborhood to agree to do this, because this is not inexpensive. Is that something that this study is going to take into consideration, what, what the actual connection cost could be? I know the CFD can address that to a certain degree, but the CFD is also going to address undergrounding the main power, power line as well, right?
It, it is, and maybe I could take this opportunity just to have Jeff come on up, and maybe answer more of your detailed questions. Jeff, if you want to just come up to the podium right there, because I think he could offer a lot to that question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Cooper with NV5. Mayor, council members, everyone here, pleasure to be here. I'm excited to assist you with this project. A little bit about me, I know I look a lot younger than this, but I've been doing these for thirty-five years, and every one of them's a little different, but a lot of them are similar. So I'm excited to help you out with this. Now, just a clarification, we're using the term CFD. Typically, you don't do these with a CFD. It's a possibility, okay? I'm not ruling it out, but usually the residential ones are done through an assessment district, okay? So, but you could do a CFD, and the CFD might be an advantage for some of the arterials. The arterials are very difficult to do through a local assessment district, because of the laws that were passed in nineteen ninety-six, Prop 218. The test for who benefits, the test has gotten tougher, and we can't assess for general benefit. But in a CFD, that doesn't matter. So I'll be look, I'll be commenting about all of them. So, that, that's the one thing I wonder...
So just getting back to the Mayor Pro-Tan's question about the connection fees.
Oh, the connection, sorry, I got off on the CFD, excuse me. Well, you know, I wish I could say something really magical about that, but the facts are, that's always a continual issue, and there's no magic to that. When you do an assessment district, you can only pay for facilities that are in the public right-of-way, okay? So if you use an assessment district, it's prohibitive to include the private improvements. So, once you get out of the public right-of-way, it's private to the home, okay? That doesn't mean to say we couldn't assist in another way. And there's, I'm doing one in West Hollywood, where they are doing that, but it varies. It's, it's really a policy on your, on your side.
Well, I guess that's my question is, we haven't done one of these. I don't know how I can help that way, and I know that's going to be a big issue as we move forward. It's always been a, a barrier to us, is how do we, you know, Dana Point is, is an older community, there's a lot of retirees here, living on fixed incomes, and if we come through and underground their utility and say, oh, by the way, now you're going to come out of pocket ten, fifteen thousand dollars to connect, that's an issue.
Right, so usually when... Right. So usually, when you get to the point where you're going to do an actual district, you go through a very public process, and that is presented at that time. And when people vote for a district, we make it very clear what it will do and what it won't do. I've done many of these in Newport Beach. It's an issue there, older homes, tough to get to. I just did Balboa Island. I did West Balboa. And it's a situation. But what typically happens is the property owner themselves, in conjunction with the city, they connect to the system themselves because it's on private property.
Correct. And I understand that. My issue is, we have to help them find a way to fund that.
Right.
That's what I'm looking for in the studies, if you have ideas on how that's been done in the past. So when we do have that public meeting, and we have an older community that may not have the expendable funds just to do it out of pocket, that we have some options for them on how they would pay for that.
Right. And what I might do is work with your city attorney on that, for some suggestions because you're getting into the private property.
That's why I bring this up here. I just want to make sure it's part of your study.
Yeah. Well, I'll try to address that.
Okay.
I'll do the best I can on that. That's a tricky topic.
That's going to be a big issue.
Yeah.
And I'm sure it has been everywhere you've done one of these.
It can be.
We need to have some ideas on how to help our residents. It is a big benefit for the community. As you can see, it's an important issue for our community, but we can't force it on people if there's just no way for them to connect. So we have to have a way to communicate with them on how we do it.
And it's part of, when you do a district, there's a vote.
Right.
And people...
I understand that, but I don't want, how do I go into a community and say, okay, there's 100 members here, 65 of them can afford to do it, 35 can't, but guess what? 35 got to find a way to pay for it. So that's an issue. So we need to have some ways to see if we can work around it to make sure everybody's on the same page.
And I'll do everything I can to help you with that.
All right, thank you.
I accept the challenge.
Any other comments, discussion, questions?
Good. Mr. Sinekori or Mr. Cooper, I just want to make sure only in the staff documentation upfront, the scope of work's a little bit condensed. I just want to make sure your scope of work that you sent to Matt is indeed the detail what we're doing. Because number three there is really what a bunch of us are asking. Financial options for undergrounding overhead utilities will be suggested for both 20A and 20B. I really love that item of work. It just wasn't in the sort of summarized level. Clearly, we're going to do that, right?
Yeah, I believe that's in my letter proposal. I actually offered to do that. I've done it for other cities, and I'll give you everything there is. I'm going to tell you again, it's a challenge at times, so you're going to have to be patient on this. It takes some time.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, no, thank you, sir. And your resume looks like, exactly like what we need.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, anything else? Madam Clerk, I think we're ready for you to take the roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Frost. Councilmember Vexoric. Councilmember Valar.
Aye.
Mayor Portemiller.
Aye.
Mayor Federico.
Aye.
That motion passes five to zero.
See, you were right. Easy five-oh.
Thank you all for coming out and speaking on that issue. Getting ready to wrap it up. Council reports. Mr. Frost, do you have any to report?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will, Ms. Shayna, I will turn in my list of meetings tomorrow. But for, just for some knowledge for Mr. Cooper and my other council members, I just wanted to give just brief background on PALS. Nobody sort of mentioned it, but these folks, I know we get it quite a bit where folks come up and sort of ask something without a lot of background. These guys throughout, oh, what, the last eight months or so, really spent a lot of time learning, educating themselves so that when they came up here, they could have a good discussion. And I know a lot of the steering committee is here. They've met. They took the time to meet with Dana Point Public Works. They took the time to meet with SDG&E, got their perspective. This group also met with Agatha Ween, CPUC. They got the Public Utilities Commission's perspective. We've also talked with San Diego as far as how they sort of run their tax, their additional tax through the franchise agreement. We've talked a little bit with Bob Whalen in Laguna Beach as far as how they try to work on it. And then this group's also talked a little bit with Sci-Fi, the A Fiber Optic Company. So while none of those sort of were the magic bullet, obviously, and we're just starting the process, I think you guys as a community group did fantastic. You took the time, you learned, and you didn't just walk up here and say, city, figure it out. Because when folks do that, it makes it awfully tough on us to act or to go in a direction. And you took the time, and a five-oh vote shows that you did it right. So thanks. And Mike, you did a good job as a leader. Len in Maryland, you did fantastic job starting up the group. So with that, that is my public, my council comments.
Thank you very much. Mr. Valar?
I have turned in my list of meetings, and the only thing I want to comment on, and I know all the council members were there last Thursday at the Veterans Day celebration that we had. Our local VFW just did a fantastic job. Don't know if you guys, any of you had a chance to go, but it was really well-run. I actually took the day off of work to celebrate since I am a veteran. Mr. Yost like twisted my arm and said, you need to be there, so I don't want to disappoint him. So it was great, and I appreciated it. It was a fantastic day, and it showed off Dana Point. It was like 78 degrees and perfect weather. So just a really good celebration and well-deserved for the veterans in our community.
Thank you very much. Mr. Vexoric?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing to report. I've turned in my list of meetings.
Fantastic. Mayor Portemiller?
Hey, Mr. Mayor. I have turned in my list of meetings. I'm trying to get back on that, on that string of doing that so I don't have to be reminded. I want to echo what Councilmember Frost just said about PALS. They reached out to me probably eight months ago, and I did one of the first Zoom meetings with them. And I really do have to, you know, recognize the fact that you listened. And we had a long conversation about what some of the restraints were going to be, what some of the barriers were going to be. And you took, and you listened, you took the time, you went out, and you figured out what they were, and you came back. That was, that's fantastic. It's exactly how it's supposed to work. Sometimes, we get so caught up in these big giant projects like Doheny Village and the Town Center, we lose sight of some of the other projects that are super important to other parts of our community. And again, this is another one of those examples where this does not impact my district. We're undergrounded. I can't think of anybody in District One that's not undergrounded already. And so, but this is important to Dana Point. That's why it's important to me, and I'll continue to work hard on this and try to figure out how to move it forward. So with that, that's, oh, I'm going to let you talk about Turkey Trot. So, you're the mayor.
Thank you very much. I will click send on my list of meetings here momentarily, soon as this meeting's over. And without stealing too much of the city manager's thunder, a lot of really cool upcoming events. This is our last meeting before Thanksgiving, certainly. Giving to everybody, I think everybody in this town has something to be thankful for. And I hope whatever it is for you, you find it and get a chance to celebrate it. The morning of Thanksgiving, the world-famous Dana Point Chamber of Commerce Turkey Trot still has slots available. And I told Vicki McMerchie from the chamber that I would mention it, and I was going to tell her, you know, if you get 50 entries before the close of business tomorrow, I'll run it in a turkey suit. And then she told me, I've been getting like 100 entries a day. So I'm like, uh-oh, I'm not making that promise, but I might do it anyway. I know we'll all be out there. It's a great event for the community. Wasn't in person last year. It is again, and a great way for us to all kind of get out there and have fun and celebrate, or support the chamber and the nonprofits that they're working with for this. You going to talk about holiday lights and stuff like that, too? All right, I'll not steal your thunder, Mr. City Manager. That's all I have. Thanks again to our community for coming out on issues tonight, giving us their voices and being partners. These, a lot of these issues work best when we all really are partnering, and this is one that the power line's going to take a lot of partnerships going forward, a lot of them, and some leadership, which is what we owe you guys. With that, Mr. City Attorney, why don't you go next?
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Great. Mr. Kilbrew?
All right, since it's Thanksgiving and it's the ultimate feast, I do want to pile on here a little bit. And turkytrot.com is where you can sign up for the race. And I was told by Vicki McMerchie from the chamber that if they get 150 registered runners tomorrow, runners, walkers, that Mayor Portemiller will get a pie in the face.
Deal.
Okay, just to run through a quick list here, we've got tomorrow night, the holiday lights go on in the harbor and all around town. And also tomorrow night, we have an e-bike symposium at the community center that starts at 6:00 PM. So do both. Go check out all the lights and go learn more about e-bike safety. We also have some tree lightings coming up, La Plaza Park Saturday, the 4th of December at 5:15 is the tree lighting. But even better than that, there's the Jolly Trolley that'll be around town, Sunset Park 1:30, Pine Spark 2:30, Sea Canyon 3:30, and then La Plaza prior to the tree lighting at 4:30. We've got Pine Spark tree lighting on Monday, the 6th, at 4:30. So we have a lot coming up on our plate, and happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Thank you very much. Brings us to our adjournment. The next regular meeting of the city council will be December 7, 2021, at 5:00 PM here in the city council chamber located at 33282 Golden Lantern, Suite 210, Dana Point, California. And especially during the holiday shopping season, and especially the day after Thanksgiving, or that weekend, or Black Friday, or Cyber Monday, skip your Cyber Monday and please shop local.